Can I have your attention, please? I'll take roll call now. Mr. Fuller Love?
Here.
Mr. Dominic?
Here.
Mrs. Lyon?
Here.
Mr. Kaber?
Here.
Mrs. DeBlock?
Here.
Mr. Helm?
Here.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Here.
Okay, before we get started with all the fun activities for tonight, and especially before the riveting tax levy hearing, just a reminder, this is a public meeting, a meeting held in public. And because it is held in public, it is open to recording. And so, anyone can record, and we are recording. So, just understand that if you have any concerns about that, that there is a recording going on right now. And with that, I'll turn it over to Carl.
All right. Tonight, by law, we are required to have a truth in taxation hearing. A truth in taxation hearing, essentially what that means is, if we are going to ask for more than five percent increase over the previous year, we have to hold a hearing whereupon members of the public could speak on, either for or against that proposal. The reason that we are having it is because the last multiple years, we have had a dropping tax rate. So, even though your actual property taxes may have went up, the share or the rate that the school collects has actually gone down six out of the last seven years. Okay? So, what we are doing in the future is trying to maintain a stable tax rate, about $4.30, which of our comparable schools in the area, we are the lowest. But in order to maintain that stable tax rate of $4.30, it's going to put us at about 105.6%. So, we're just going over the 5% by six tenths of a percent. All right? Now, the reason that we want to make sure that we hold a stable tax rate is because, much like farming, school finances are, you have to save in the good times for when the bad times are coming. And we've had some pretty good times as far as the state of Illinois is concerned over the last seven or eight years. So, we want to make sure that we are doing everything we can to be fiscally responsible. But at the same time, as those tax rates continue to drop, we have to find a floor at some point in time. Okay? But again, we have our anticip- if the anticipated levy comes in and the estimates are correct, the worst that you would see is a stable tax rate, the same exact rate as what you had last year for property owners. If the estimates come back higher, which they've been very conservative the last, since I've been here, this will be the third time, they've been very conservative estimates. And property values have actually come back higher than what the counties have estimated, both Rock Island and Mercer County. So, if those tax estimates come back higher than the 2.5% increase that Mercer County is expecting, your tax rate will drop again. Okay? All the fan mail for that type of thing can be sent to the district office. I'm just teasing. Okay? So, essentially, if our tax rate, if our estimates come back accurate from the county, your tax rate will stay the same. Mathematically, it can't go up. Okay? But if the estimates are conservative and the property values actually come up higher than what is estimated, your tax rate will drop again. And again, by law, we are required to have this public hearing before the actual board meeting.
Does anyone in the public want to comment on the tax levy? It's been posted for 30 days. Gone once. Kids, anyone want to comment on a tax levy?
I told them we'd be talking about it.
Nothing? Okay. Gone once. Gone twice. So move. Okay, we will now move in. I'll entertain a motion to approve the tax levy as presented.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion was made by Mr. Dominic, seconded by Mr. Kaber, to approve the tax levy as presented. Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mr. Kaber?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlock?
Yep.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Helm? Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller Love?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Now, we'll move into our formal portion of the board meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, over to the agenda. Dr. Johnson, is there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir. As presented.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion was made by Mrs. Lyon, seconded by Mr. Helm, to adopt the agenda as presented. Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Kaber?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlock?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller Love?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. We don't have anyone who has recognition members of the audience, but we have audience participation later. Over to the Tiger Talent.
Good evening again, everyone. One of the favorite things that we do on a monthly basis, and it's awesome to have so many people here to witness this, is a program we call Tiger Talent. I was actually nursing a knee surgery before I started and had very little to do besides lay there with my own thoughts. And one of the things that I taught, was talked about in my interview here with the board, was what can we do for more recognition? And this is a program that we collectively came up with. Essentially, in a nutshell, who do we want to recognize in this district that would literally be the best salespeople to move here, to Sherard, just by talking to this person? They're exceptional employees, they're exceptional people, they go above and beyond for kids. So that when someone from the outside, so to speak, comes to Sherard and talks to these people, they're like, hey, I would like my kid to be working with that person. Maybe I'm a teacher, and I would like to be working with that person. So, with that, we have the Tiger Talent Dedication Award, which also includes this lovely golden apple, which is a bell that you can ring in front of your fellow employees' faces to say, yes, I am awesome. So, no, those people don't do that, that's why they get the award. So, with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Elliott, and take it away.
She thinks it's me. She thinks I'm the one. She's going to be so mad. Okay, Lori, you thought you had me. I got you. We are actually going to recognize a pair of educators that work very well together. This month, we are recognizing these two, Robyn and Lori Staley, both from the special education classroom. They are like, Batman and Robin, two children. They're like, they're jelly. They just go together and work so incredibly well together. They're like peanut butter and jelly. They just go together. When you look at Lori and Sue working together, it's kind of calm and cool, actually. They're like, Bert and Mary, or salt and pepper. One of them's kind of the go-to, one of them's kind of the bad top, if you will. They both have great hearts, give it their best for kids. Lori brings a lot of patience and compassion. Sue is the one that kind of keeps everything rolling, everything on track. Okay, next kid, here's what we need to do. Congratulations, you've done great today. Next kid, here's what we need to do. So, they just both work very, very well together, but then also work well individually with the kids. It's funny that they work so well together, because Miss Sue is like, no non-ends. She has like a motive that never stops running. She's always like, jumping in to help people. So, you have one who is so like nurturing, and one who is so like, let's get to business. She's like, no, we need to do it this way, because this is the way it's supposed to get, you know? They balance each other out. And they really take the time to focus on the children as individuals and give them that extra unrelighted attention that they need.
I think they, they will have the same values, and they want the best for kids, too, learning real life skills, but also learn how to do math. You got it right, you have to fill out a job application, application, whatever it takes, they're going to get those kids to that point.
There are some times where I need a second set of hands to come in and help me out. You don't have to fight them, you don't have to, you know? Are you really busy? No, no, of course, I can do whatever, whatever you need, I gotcha.
So, it's beautiful. They bounce off each other perfectly. The kids are loved, they're well taken care of in there, but I can't imagine one without the other.
Lori is loved throughout the school. I mean, kids come in every day, all day long, for hugs from her.
Lori and I actually started our careers in Sherard about the same time. We were both two teachers at that time. And she came back here to teach at Winola Elementary, while a different principal was here. I came back in, we got to work together when I was a junior high student during the past summer, so we've been working together ever since. She is like a warm hug. She, every kid wants to go in there and be with her. And she like, just helps them and feel wanted and loved, and like, so important. She has a way of lifting it up, that is like, very unique and special.
She has such a gentle heart, and she's so thoughtful with kids. When I'm having a hard day, and I'm going through a hard week, she lets me pass, and I leave, throw my hair out, and I'm like losing my control. Lori is there to always come in and help.
She cares so much about each student. And she comes and texts me every time we have, we share a student, about like, what goals they should work on, how to better help them. She is an amazing teacher.
We have become friends. She was my youngest son's very good teacher. She goes the extra mile. She's always constantly buying the extra things. I mean, even for me, she brought me Twizzlers today. Just because she saw them in the store, and she knows that I love them. So, also, she's kind of like an experience. She makes a huge impact on everyone she can meet.
She is just a standout educator. I don't know anything in the building. She always makes the right choice for kids. She's always here. In fact, she was gone one day earlier this year, and it really was, whoa, what if students, something must have really been wrong. She helps with, within the special education classroom with a bunch of students. She'll also pull general education students to do things throughout the day. She can be involved in the lunchroom, helping with supervision there. And then after school, that's where most parents get her to figure out, I just love doing. She's so compassionate about helping people and doing what's fair and what is right. I mean, just, that's like the core of who she is. Which makes her so phenomenal at this job, because she makes the kids be loved and secure and safe, almost like motherly, but also good boundaries and pushes them always to do their best. She was actually my native person from my oldest two girls. I knew if I could trust her with my children, then I could trust her with the children of our district. And I never have looked back. She's done a wonderful job ever since, and she was hired 10 years ago. If she has one minute of downtime, she's like, she leaves the room and she goes to someone's classroom to find someone to pull to read with, or to correct papers, or to do something for someone else in the building.
Sue and I, I'm a teenager, and we're in fifth grade. It doesn't matter what the job is, and that, no matter what it is, you did it, done it, you do it. And that is Sue. She doesn't want anybody to go without. But at the same time, she's always going to make sure that the kids are learning what's right to do with the world. She's going to get down with the kids on her own, and she's going to teach them how to tie their shoes.
Miss Sue runs around here like crazy, and she does everything. In a good crazy way, you know? But she does everything, anything that you need.
Yeah, Sue is always the one who needs the better people.
I definitely consider one of my parent, one of my closest friends. She, one day, I just said something about, oh, I need to get my hair cut. And Jessica Luffel happened to be in the hallway, and she does my hair. And she's like, oh, you have an appointment? She came back in, and she's like, I have an appointment at four, and whatever. I was, she got by my door, working with students in the hallway, and she's just like, keeps encouraging them, and, you know, will say things like, over and over and over again, until they, they get it. Now, I wish I could have her energy and her drive, because like, it's very admirable. She, I don't know how she has so much energy, but she does.
I just appreciate them, in general, as educators, and as colleagues, and as friends, as just people in the building, I just appreciate them.
It is everything to love your job.
I can't imagine doing this job with anyone else.
I love my job, because I love who I work with.
Because she's like, we always joke like that we're men in black, and we're like, you know, just a good team.
I can always depend on her, and I'm looking forward to coming in every day.
I'm sorry. But I love you, and I would never want to do this job without you. Okay, Lori, you thought you had me. I'm not that funny. They think I am. She'll get over it, though.
Ladies, come on up and get your golden apples. Some tears, that's always a good thing.
Thank you so much.
One more round of applause to these great ladies. Thank you, ladies.
Okay, now, we're over to the good news report.
On to the good news report. Who do we have? Who's my?
No, it's up here.
Oh, they're filling, okay. I thought we were making them read it, since it's so long.
Hello and welcome to the December edition of the Good News Report. I'm Kevin Vermeier.
And I'm Mackenzie Volker, and we've got plenty of exciting updates from around the district to share. So, let's get started.
The Mercer County Farm Bureau's Ag in the Classroom Program continues to inspire our second graders. Last month, local farmer Chad Bell stopped by to share insights about working on his hog farm. He even brought sausage pizza from Happy Joe's to make the lesson extra special for students.
And speaking of special, the elementary winter music programs were a huge success. Families packed the audience to enjoy performances from our talented students. A huge thank you to Mrs. Tully, classroom teachers Joel Dollinger, Jim Morrison, and everyone else who helped it, helped make it all possible.
Resource Officer Mike Mendoza also brought joy to selected students through Cops and Kids at Christmas. Students shared with area deputies, making wonderful memories for the holiday season.
At Sherard Grade Librarian and former Tiger Talent recipient Karen Miller-Chip launched a meaningful holiday project. She's collecting old cookbooks from students to choose recipes baked with their families, and shared their experiences afterward.
This project received an extra boost thanks to $4 donation from community member Martha Jinks. Thank you for helping to make the holidays even brighter.
Winola Elementary hosted a fantastic family night on November 21st, where families enjoyed a book fair, sing long songs, and popcorn-filled theater, and bingo. The event was well-received with glowing feedback from attendees.
And then, Winola students in grades 10 through 4 participated in the IDHS Holiday Cards for Veterans Campaign. Over 150 heartfelt cards were sent to veterans across Illinois to spread holiday cheer.
Over at Matherville, the elementary TPC cookie and pie orders were delivered. A big thank you to everyone who supported this initiative.
Mrs. Paget and Mrs. Seadequist worked hard to prepare fifth and sixth graders for their winter concert on December 9th. The Soonest delivered a fantastic performance. Great job to all.
And congratulations to Zach Johnson and his wife, who welcomed baby Willow Lynn Johnson on December 4th. Both mom and baby are doing well.
The Junior High 8-3 girls basketball team clinched the IEDSA Regional 10 Championship, defeating Farmington 29 to 17. Glory Wickland earned the tournament's sportsmanship award.
The FFA Junior High Horse Judging Team also shown winning first place in the Section 3 competition at Black Hawk East in Galva. The team included Colby Parrish, Lane Weber, Madeline Berberich, and Caleb Thompson.
Another standout was Tanner Hammond, who participated in a baseball showcase at Globe Life Stadium, home of the Texas Rangers. Tanner tied for sixth place in the Amsterdelle Home Run Derby, hitting eight home runs with his furthest traveling and impressive 291 feet.
And a big congratulations to John Tucker, Elena Volker, and Delaney Wilchel, who represented Sherard Junior High in the first ILMEA Junior High All-State Choir.
Over at the high school, Mackenzie Volker and Vivian Shivers earned ILMEA All-State Music Honors.
The Sherard Tie Gears Robotics Team continued their success, winning four of five matches and securing second place at their maiden orient. They're now 7-3 for the season and sit in second place in the Central Illinois Robotics League.
Both basketball teams are off to strong starts. The boys team has a 5-1 record, and the girls team celebrated head coach Doug Swanson's 300th career victory.
Finally, a big thank you to Stacy Blackwell for organizing the Operation Santa campaign, with help from building secretaries and principals. Thanks to, thanks to their efforts and generous donations from our staff, many Sherard families received gift cards and support this holiday season.
This campaign highlights the incredible generosity of our community and staff. Thank you all for making a difference.
That wraps up our, this month's Good News Report.
Thanks for tuning in, and as always, stay positive, Sherard. Both basketball teams are off to the strong two. The, the, oh boy.
That wraps up this month's Good News Report. Yes.
Okay, our next, I'll pull up our slideshow here. Okay. Excited to announce that tonight is going to be our first presentation from our Student Advisory Board. He has a way better voice than I do, in hair. All right. Student Advisory Board. What we want to see here at Sherard is, if you want to have true improvement, you have to ask everyone that's involved with what's happening. So, obviously, we have an elected school board, we have dedicated teachers and administrators, we have dedicated paraprofessionals, all the way from bus drivers, cooks, custodians, maintenance, you name it. We've got people who've got a lot of buy-in. And honestly, I've spent the last 2.5 years making sure that I'm talking to those people, and I'm also trying to talk to the kids. But I think it would be important if we could have a little more formal presentation and responsibility for the kids. So, what we're going to do this year is each quarter, starting now, we're going to have a group of kids from each of the schools that are going to get together, and they're going to tell us as adults exactly what they are thinking and what we can do to get better. So, what we're going to do first here is have the kids introduce themselves and anybody that is, that they've brought with them tonight. So, with that, let's see here. Okay, let's start on the end with Sherard High School. Grady?
Hello, everybody. My name's Grady Steele. I'm a senior at Sherard High School. I brought my awesome mother, Abby Steele.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kelsey Dinan. I'm also a senior at Sherard High School. I'm also a worker. I'm also a senior at Sherard High School, and I came with my parents, Tanya and Mary.
Go for it.
My name is Cole Swanson, and I'm at Sherard Grade School. I'm with my name, Dick Swanson.
My name's Harper Drake, and I'm at Sherard Grade School, and I'm here for my mom.
My name's Edward Hugel, and I'm at Sherard Grade School.
I'm Alexis Essery. I go to the Sherard Junior Senior High School, and I came with my parents, Jason and Rachel.
I'm Dr. Ingrid. I brought my mom to school.
I'm Patrick Nolan. I brought my mom for a mom's night.
I'm Casey Glaser, and I'm at Winola.
I'm Summer Mae Wates, and I'm at Winola Elementary. I brought my mom.
I'm Alana Webb, Sky Show Lake, and I went to parents' drop.
I'm Lauren Dawson. I brought my mom for school.
I'm Mary Wees. I go to Matherville, and I brought my mom to school.
Don't feel bad. The first time I had to come to a board meeting at Sherard, guess who I brought? Brought my mom, too. All right. So, the students were charged with looking at three different areas. And, and I wanted them to come up with ideas. And the guidelines were, we don't want to buy stuff, because if funding evaporates, the stuff evaporates. When it breaks, you have to spend more money. So, we told them, let's focus on ideas. And the ideas that we wanted them to focus on were first academic achievement. What changes can we do to make sure that we're performing better academically every day, every week, every year? Social and behavioral. Do students have all of the support that they need to be successful in the schools? And then finally, extracurricular. Do we need to add, subtract, change, anything about our extracurricular offerings? And again, we emphasize that we want the ideas. We want things that you can do, as opposed to things that you can buy. And I think you guys are going to see that the kids did not disappoint whatsoever. Okay? These are in relatively random order, considering the notes that I took. And what we did is, we got together, and we had two meetings with the groups at each individual school. So, went to Winola, went to Sherard Grade, went to Matherville, the Junior High and the High School. I made two stops at each of those. First, just to let the kids know exactly what's happening. Gave them some homework, here's what we want you to come up with. And then, after those two meetings, we invited everybody over to the district office, where, let's see, we had some cookies and chips and a little bit of everything to go along with the great ideas. And then, to get ready for tonight, we made them pick ideas from other schools and have those kids from the other schools explain exactly what this is. So, when you see this finely polished performance tonight, you're going to understand that it was literally a peer review that made that possible. Okay? So, Matherville, oh, go back one if you would please. Matherville, where are we at? We're going to have you guys stand up and talk your first ideas up there. Tell us what you're talking about.
So, we're talking about peer teaching, which is basically having a student who understands material, explain it to a student who doesn't quite understand the material as well, to hopefully make it easier for the student who doesn't understand the material, to help the student who doesn't understand the material, understand it better, and hopefully, learn from what the other student showed them.
Very good. All right, thanks, guys. Let's see, Winola.
More required reading at home and school, so we normally read 15 minutes. It would maybe be a little bit better to read 20 or 25 minutes each day at that school. And more project-based learning that may take more than just half an hour, maybe might take multiple days to do.
All right, thanks, guys.
Well, we should read every night, because at school, we don't really get to read as much. And at home, even if you write like, even if you read like, five minutes before bed, it can still help you with your reading.
All right. Where's my Junior High? Junior High, there you are.
More feedback on assignments and stronger spiraling between lessons. So, if we learn something in class, we need to be able to use it throughout the week before upcoming tests, and review it until test dates.
Thank you. And Sherard High School.
So, we kind of talked about like, after-school office hours, where the teachers can explain more of what they're thinking about, like, the lessons and stuff. And maybe post-teacher schedules outside their room so that students know when they can go and talk to that teacher. We also talked about like, peer tutoring in the library and encouraging students to ask for help from tutors, because sometimes they don't feel comfortable enough to do that.
So, before we go to the next slide, I want every, all the adults in the audience to take a look at this, because I, I had a saying that I keep going back to is, I'll never be that grumpy old, I'll be a grumpy old man, but I won't be that grumpy old man that says, these kids just don't get it. I'm of the opinion that if you give kids a chance to impress you, they're going to do it every. it every time. And if you stop and look at this, one thing that I did as a classroom teacher many, many decades ago is if there were rules that needed to be made, throw it out there and see what they come up with. Because nine times out of ten, those kids are going to come up with tougher rules than anything I ever would. And if you stop and look at the academic performance goals, what can we do to get better? Both elementary schools read more at home. I didn't say, let's, you know, let's give them some more homework, let's do this. No, not at all. You know, what did the high school come up with? How can I work with my teacher more? Junior High, what can I do to talk to my teacher more and make sure that we're consistently going back to different things? So this is what I'm talking about when you give kids a chance to actually come up with what do we need to do to get better? They're probably going to come up with tougher ideas than what the adults do. So, okay. Thank you, sir. Matherville, you're up first.
So we said public speaking for classes because like kids, some kids are really nervous. So like they might need to make more comfort around other people in public.
Nailed it, good job. Alright. And I think it's interesting that sixth graders are coming up with public speaking. Now, I'm guessing that maybe this night was on their mind when they came up with that, but nonetheless, awesome. Winola?
Get better with large and intentions and behavior consideration because most people in class don't usually get along and they think that they can come off and do what they want. So if we do more of that, maybe they will.
Very good. Right? Junior High?
So we need some better goal setting, which can be very rewarding for students. And when anyone does anything wrong, they should be gradually more punished for it so they learn that that's not right. And we need more like extracurriculars, so after-school activities like evening dances and that makes a more welcoming environment for students.
Good job. Oh, Sherard Grade School?
New lunch items and a buddy bench. A buddy bench is if you feel lonely at recess, you can go sit on the bench and someone will come sit on the bench with you and then you get to play with someone.
Very good, thanks, guys. And Sherard High School?
We said to mentor from the community for support would be good because it's one thing to have your teachers and parents tell you to do your homework, but I think it's more important to have other people show that they care about you and that they care about your learning to actually help drive you to do that. We also said it's cross-activity support for fine arts events in yearbooks because I don't think, I don't think it's fair for the varsity sports to tell or I guess to have people show up to their games when even us as a football team, we didn't, we don't support the band too much or like, like an art club and stuff like that. And I think it's also important for us to show thankful, to be thankful to the yearbook, the people that set that up because they document our, they document our sports. And I mean, that, that means a lot to us. And it's, I think it's, we also said community calendar, TV and commons because the TV out there doesn't have a lot on it. It's usually, they're just pictures of us, but I think it's important to have people to know when the games are and stuff so more people can come out. I also said, we also said that old-school pep rallies were smart because our homecoming week, we had, we had a pep rally and it was more old-school and I think that brought the school a lot together and it sure made the football team want to win a lot more. We also said increase student of the month recognition because I think that will drive more students to be better in class, hopefully.
Awesome. Alright, and then finally, our last one. What can we do with extracurriculars? So Matherville, you're up.
So Matherville is where you begin like band and choir and stuff like that, but we really only have like in-class periods to do it and a lot of kids don't practice at home. So we thought of turning it instead of like in-class thing to put it out of class like, let's say like basketball practice would be because we don't, we don't get that opportunity.
Thanks, guys. Winola?
We've been invited more family nights opportunities and after-school programs. It's if like parents can't have enough time to go pick up their kids after school, they can go to after-school programs and learn a lot more things and then the parents can come pick them up and more family nights get, you get more opportunities to spend time with your family.
Thank you. And Sherard Grade?
We thought of having a pollinator plant in the like side of the school to like have more like butterflies in the school district.
Very good. Because you're going to work with National Honor Society who already does it here, right? Alright, very good. Has everybody seen the new, the retention pond on the west side of Sherard Grade? Essentially, everything from the parking lot and the new addition goes into a retention pond that slowly drains ninety-nine percent of the time, there's zero water in there. So duplicating what the National Honor Society had done with the pollinator plot here would be ready to go there. So Mr. Lyon's fired up about that one, too. Junior High School?
We talked about better sportsmanship and how the parents need to respect their refs. So for better sportsmanship, we could get a banner and we could have it read aloud or hold in front of the crowd so people could see the like requirements for the sportsmanship and so people don't go over the top.
Very good, thank you. And Sherard High School?
We brought up the idea of involving more intramural sports, just to kind of bring the community together, get more people to start getting interested in more of those sports as well as just bringing, you know, your friends together, getting people involved. We also thought about bringing the chess team back. I think a lot of people, even Grady said he would be, you know, interested in bringing some of those extra sports that you aren't necessarily, you know, they're not known as well around anymore, but I think bringing that back would be very beneficial. And then lastly, the free admission to the school board has been very well. Going to sports games and things like that, we've had a lot of extra people come to the games, so we've done that very beneficial so far, so continuing that would be very well.
Awesome, thanks, guys. So, next thing we need to do, we meaning Dr. Johnson, is make sure that we communicate these ideas with everyone that needs to know in terms of who can make these things happen, okay? Start to get projects on the calendar, so for example, the pollinator plot, buddy bench, something like that, what can we do to get the ball rolling so that when it's time and we're ready to go for recess or outdoor activities, we can have that on the books. Action plans for educators, I know the high school, for example, brought up several things that would be about accessibility and scheduling with teachers so that they could work together. So what can we do to communicate that with the teachers and the people who are actually going to be working with the kids? And then finally, create communication plans for students. And one of the important things that the high school group said in our first meeting here was, we've got a lot of great things going on, but we need to be able to communicate them better so that everybody knows about it. And that's one of those things where over-communication is always better than under. And I think it was very important that they pointed that out and then they came through with what can we do, for example, with the TV in the commons to make sure that people are seeing exactly what's happening. Literally take away all excuses, oh, I didn't know what was going on, so over-communicate. Okay? What questions does the school board have for our fine students on any of these? I warned them that there may be questions.
Great job, first of all. A lot of insight there.
Mine's more of an observation. I rarely saw any of you with note cards, notes or anything, so it was very obvious that you guys knew the material, that you thought through it and these were your ideas, not just something that you were reading, so that was extremely impressive to me. I liked how the junior high kids spoke about everyone being accountable and disciplined. Like all that was the theme through all three of their ideas, so it's refreshing. So question to all of you. What was the most challenging part of doing this? And then on the flip side, what was the most rewarding? You all don't have to answer, but whichever the brave one wants to go.
I think for Matherville, getting the actual ideas was the hardest part because we had to think of something that would apply to most, very good portion of the students. And the best part was the dreams we got.
That's Becky.
Anybody else?
I would agree with what she said, I think the most challenging part was definitely trying to involve all students as a student body. Getting everybody involved in those types of things is, you know, crucial when it comes to the district, so definitely thinking about those different aspects that involve every single person in our district was very difficult to figure out, but you know, obviously, we had a lot of great ideas here.
Did you talk to your parents and friends about the ideas or were they all your original ones? We talked to, I don't know what Skyler did, but me and Emory have the same homeroom and we often talked with our homeroom class about it and if it would be like, if they would like it and stuff like that and they were very supportive.
We'd almost like run our ideas by the students to see if they would get on board with the ideas so there wasn't really any comments at the end. If the plans got made and it started and so the kid went like, um... The kids wouldn't almost like go against from doing the ideas.
Consensus, right?
Did you meet a couple times or was this a one? You met twice?
Tell them all about the process. Remember what we did?
So the first time we met, he took us from the class we were in and just gave us a rundown of what was happening. And we started there on what we needed to take the plans from, so like academic, social and extracurricular. He broke those down for us and then the second time was giving him the ideas and then we met at the district office and that is where we did like the peer thing where we all went through the ideas and he asked questions that we had.
And after the first meeting, they came to eat, when I went back out to the buildings for the second meeting, some came in with notebooks, some came in with structured notes and action plans, I mean, it was like completely blown away, it was awesome. Because I just said, you're going to have a little bit of homework, I just want you to come up with the ideas and bring them back, but they hit the ground running, so I was, I was blown away by what they were able to do, it was great.
Did you guys volunteer to do this or were you like higher teachers or?
We were chartering our principals. She just thought of us as very good students, respectful, responsible.
I can vouch for that. They were very, they were very, very responsible, very thoughtful, it was good.
I guess the question I have is, it's a lot of great ideas, first of all, but then you also have the next steps up there. Are the students going to be involved in implementation of these ideas as well? And then is there going to be any follow-up so they can kind of see the entire plan to check out the process?
Action process where they'll be my eyes and ears in the building, so when I'm not walking through the hall or, you know, if I can't see it, I can actually go back to them and say what is happening in practice. You know, we know that we talk to everybody, here's, you know, here's what we want to do, but what is actually happening, so.
So I guess my last comment would be to all of you all is remember this process. Remember it when you're either going up through Matherville and Junior High High School, long after you go to college, long after you get married, but then when you have kids and your kids are here in a school district, whether it's here at Sherard or whether it's in a different place, but stay involved in your children's education when you get older. This is a great place to get started with that. I had a superintendent twenty years ago who got me involved and that's a primary reason I'm here today is because I learned there's a whole bunch of cool things you can do to help support students, so I hope you guys remember it and it stays with you. So we appreciate everything you did, great work.
Parents, thank you so much for letting your kids participate, coming to pick them up from the district office after our late meeting and for bringing them again tonight and so be very proud of them, I think this is the start of something good and going to make some differences for sure, so. Round of applause for these students. And if you guys really want to stay for the meeting, the rest of the meeting, you're more than welcome to, however, if anybody would like to go home, you would not hurt anyone's feelings either. So thank you guys so much for coming, if you want to stay, you can stay, but if you want to go, we completely understand. Thank you again. Good job, guys.
Good question. How, I mean, how are you going to determine which ideas you want? I want to support the chess club, I would like to make a donation.
Oh, sure, sure, yeah.
Buy like ten chess boards or donate two hundred dollars.
Shoot me an email, well, I'm going to try to find somebody in the community that can do it, yeah.
I work for DCF, so I have a business card on me, but, um...
No worries.
Okay.
I'm on the district website.
But his, his brother Harrison and him go to the after-school program and they have gotten into chess and I think it would be amazing if, was it Grady?
Mm-hmm.
If it could be an all-ages thing. I've seen both of the kids improve in their attention span, their sportsmanship even with chess, like...
Have a minute, walk down to the end of this hall and look at the left wall. I think there were three state titles here in the seventies.
Really?
Yeah, it's on, there's a picture on the wall, it's like a Hall of Fame.
Finding Bobby Fischer, whatever that movie was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, myself and his father, we played chess, not anything serious, but once we saw that our kids could get excited about something like that and then we brought that up, I'm like, yes, I'm in it, I would love to support that.
Yeah, seriously, well, it's on the Hall of Fame title.
Okay, and shoot you an email?
Yeah, let me know.
Got it.
And then I'm going to start putting out feeler to, because we need a sponsor, so that could either be a teacher here or a community member, because I think when they won state titles, it was a community member and not a teacher, that was the coach sponsor.
Okay, awesome, I think it could be like a big for this.
See, we could have the fire trucks on scene.
Alright, take care, nice to meet you.
I'm here in a renaissance and it's coming back.
Thanks for reading, I appreciate that.
That's what I'm here for.
Yeah, you want a paper copy?
She wants to go beat her principal over the head.
The... I'll just share it right here. And then you can make a copy. I'll make you an editor, so don't worry. Or no, you don't have to be an editor, you can be a viewer.
You remember the original ten block fire, they would throw the dummy of the other team in there and get them all fired up. What it became was, obviously you can't do that anymore, and so we would light the bonfire, kids would stand around, yay, and then fire department would put it out and the whole thing lasted fifteen minutes.
So for the record, did I have anything to do?
I never thought you had anything to do with it.
We just get me correct constantly that I responsible.
This is not a Kim DeBlock decision here, so.
Nothing to do with any of the bonfires.
We understand if you don't want to say.
We don't want her in your office tomorrow. You just got healed and back, we don't...
Why does Kim have that two-foot length of pipe?
Okay, back to the boring consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Is there a second?
Motion is made by Mrs. Lyon about Mr. Dominic to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mrs. Leeper?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlock?
Yes.
Mr. Kaber?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yep.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Motion kicked.
Over to you, Dr. Johnson.
Okay, good evening again. The first item that we have tonight is our new course changes and proposals. These are from Mr. Warnington, let me get that pulled up here. Let me get that pulled up here. Um, I did include them in your, uh, in your board packet, the memo, um, where they're, these for the most part are, um, easily understood changes. There are some exciting possibilities in there. Um, one of the ones I want to bring your attention to is at the bottom of the first page, the expanding the agricultural co-op education. Um, as we've talked in the past, a couple of years, we want to make sure that we are expanding the opportunities that kids have to become involved in work, whether that's an internship, a co-op that's going to build some skills, um, start doing that while they're in high school. And we have several community partners who are more than willing to jump in all the way from, um, helping out with an internship or an apprenticeship that would lead to a union position, um, down to informal work experience. So this is another opportunity we have, um, for making sure that we're expanding our kids' opportunities to go right into the work world if that's what they choose to do. Okay? Um, a couple of title changes. Um, let's see, uh, getting down to, uh, course additions. Um, there is one that I'm excited about simply because of my major. It's at the bottom of page two, uh, dual credit political science. Did we get rid of our potential teacher here? Did he leave? Alex?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, uh, Mr. Johnson is actually certified and, uh, to teach dual credit political science. Um, so in the first step is to make sure that we have a course. The second step is to, uh, get the logistics piece of it approved since he is an associate principal. Um, but this is a situation where we would be able to do this in-house for the minimal fee through Blackhawk and the kids would have a three credit hour course. So, um, would be a phenomenal opportunity for the kids. Um, uh, Mr. Warnington and I met with Mr. Johnson. Um, he's, he's the one who brought it up. Um, so we didn't want you to think that, hey, we're going to add one more log to your fire here, but, um, uh, he's excited about it. Um, one period a day. Um, if we know Alex, he's not the kind of guy that's going to, uh, sleep on anything. He doesn't mind and he seems, uh, pretty excited about being able to do something like this. I think that it's, uh, it's healthy to get back into the classroom occasionally. I speak, uh, uh, out of experience. Uh, I love getting back in there, so, um, that would be a good opportunity. Uh, but again, the first step would be to, uh, make sure that we actually have something on the books, um, and we do have the willing, um, instructor.
Dr. Johnson, two other quick points.
Yes, sir.
One, he did do the same thing when he was a teacher at Orient, so he's taught this before. And the second thing is, did this class would also, uh, cover the government requirement that is the state requires?
Yes. That's right.
When, uh, when course changes or new courses are proposed, are students consulted? Is there anything that you, you talk to the students about what they would like to see?
A lot of them come from them. Uh, the original intent, the teachers are the ones that proposed it to us. Uh, but they do it through conversation with the students as well too. Uh, many times it's a class that I think one of them in here, uh, it was a huge discussion at a sociology class. And so that's when the teacher thought this might be something that we need to add to our curriculum. So we did the research and added that. Uh, a class that we offer senior life skills came from, uh, proposals that all of our seniors do. Actually, they did them this week. They bring something to the administration on what they want to change. And it's probably three years ago now that they wanted, uh, here's a class that we need. We, we leave and we don't have these skills. And so, uh, actually Mrs. Kirkland is the one that taught the first couple of years and still remains a very popular class. So I would say many times, I can't say yes, every single time it's from the kids, but many times.
They're consulted there. Do you take their input?
Absolutely.
What about, um, uh, I would say next level? So do you speak with anybody in the local colleges or employers to see what perhaps skills?
Yeah, uh, Blackhawk, we're regular communication with. We have multiple conversations with them every year on our dual credit offerings and uh, whether we have someone here that's able to teach it or we have to bring someone in or if it's a total remote class. Uh, Mrs. Drish, our academic coordinator is in regular communication with the trades because we're always looking for opportunities to expand internships and he said she's the one that was really wanting to expand the, uh, true co-op program that might have been in place when you were in high school. Um, and so yes, the answer is yes.
Tim, as we keep adding more classes, which is awesome, do we see our average class attendance, because we offer so many different ones, dropping to where, what's the business case cost analysis of if we're teaching class of only five, eight? I don't know what those numbers are.
Yep, that's, that's an excellent point, uh, one that Dr. Johnson and I have talked about a lot recently. And so what we did with some classes before was put them on an every other year schedule. And so these classes will have to work through and figure out, okay, we'll offer this this year and this next year and do it every other year. Cause we know it's not feasible to offer classes to six, eight kids.
But you guys do keep track of exactly how many.
Yes.
And one more thing to throw in there that Tim and I talked about is the, uh, when administrators, counselors are talking to kids about potential schedules, these are pointed out that if you want to be able to have these type of dual credit experiences, if it's an every other year thing, you know, if you're a junior and it's offered this year, here's your chance. So it's.
Yeah, so it all starts as freshmen when the, when the counselors sit down and try to draw out a four-year plan and a potential career path and everything else, understanding like they could, could change along the way, but just to help get students and parents thinking two, three, that year down the road.
Are there requirements to get into the dual, the poly?
Depends on the class. Um, like for the English classes, they have to take the Accuplacer. Um, or like our, our dual credit welding, uh, they had to have had some prerequisites. For this particular political science class, there's.
There is.
So like who sets the standard, like the English class? Who sets that?
Blackhawk.
You?
Have to submit a syllabus.
Cause I think I asked you this question before because not to put it out there, but my daughter did not pass the class, but when she got the report back from Blackhawk, it placed her in an advanced English class, but yet she couldn't get into dual credit. So I was always curious who sets the guideline when Blackhawk is saying she's in an advanced class, but yet she can't get into high school dual credit. So it kind of contradicts things.
The Accuplacer. I think they rely a hundred percent on the Accuplacer, right? For, for that class.
That's what she took.
Yeah.
And so I'm like, this makes no sense to me that you're going to put her in a advanced class. So I was just curious who makes the call.
So I think so's asking, her daughter took the Accuplacer. Is it like if, if all, whoever takes Accuplacer in Sherard, is it a top, over many kids versus?
It's a cut score.
Yeah, it's just. Okay. So why would the cut score be higher for a high school dual credit class than an advanced class in college?
That's what I understand.
That's one thing I will never claim to know about the world of higher education. Tim and I had this conversation too, and that does not, it defies logic, right?
It didn't make sense.
So. Uh, and then the last two classes that you see there are, um, history classes that are, I'm, I'm happy to add our newest 100% certified teacher. He is a successful product as of today of the, um, Masters of Alternative Teaching, Mr. Daniel Williams. Um, also with the, uh, paid for with the, uh, Teacher Vacancy Grant. So, um, he got his transcripts and, uh, he's good to go. A hundred percent certified. Uh, but he has, uh, made two proposals. The first, uh, African-American history. The second, uh, history of American film. Um, I know that the first one would, African-American history would be easily translated into an AP level course. Um, and that I think that's his ultimate goal for that is, um, extremely motivated to be able to teach a high level course. Uh, and it is my understanding that the history of American film, uh, has a potential for, uh, some type of an AP direction in the future. Um, but again, I think, uh, being able to offer, um, as many AP opportunities as we can to the kids is good. But again, as Tim said, it, it comes down to a scheduling. If we don't, if it's not feasible to run the class, ultimately we're not going to run the class for two or three kids. So, all right. Any questions on those items?
I don't have a question on any of these items, but it kind of, and, um, refers back to the first class listed about the Chromebook repair being changed to IT and the junior high not taking it back anymore. Uh, maybe Mr. Trump was, or answered this or maybe not. I just have concerns for the kids in the junior high grades that don't have access to a laptop or something doing their homework at home. Like I know Elise comes home and she doesn't have a laptop anymore, so she takes mine and she has it for like two hours a night doing homework. So what if they don't have that as an option? What are those kids supposed to fall back on? I mean, I understand why they don't take them back, don't take them home anymore because they trash them. Completely understand that, but I just hate to have those kids that don't have something like that being held to the same deadlines when it's really not their fault that they can't access it.
We, I know we have talked several different times with staff about making sure we're being flexible about allowing kids to come in before school to work on things. If they can't have access to it, be flexible on some deadlines if need be. I've got, I handle little Chromebooks that I loan out all the time in my office and they can come in anytime. I know, I know when kids leave on vacation, I know when kids leave, I usually send one home with them. So we have options. We can always increase the number that when we go home, um, we can better communicate that to them. Cause a lot of times I don't hear about it, you know, until something happens.
Right.
And, and Steve and Brady and I have talked too. It's a, it's a growth process, not just for the kids, but for the teachers to be able to change too, because teachers have been used to doing things a particular way, especially since pandemic times. Um, what, how can we change some instructional practices? How can we change, uh, some of the homework expectations, you know, so that, uh, uh, kids don't need that online presence quite as much? But again, I mean, just like it's a growth process for the kids, I want to be sympathetic to the teachers that we can't just say, okay, we're going to completely revert back to 1962. So.
I'm not blaming them on anything that you're doing. I'm just questioning like if they don't have access, like I would just feel terrible if a kid, you know, had the intellect to get things done, but just didn't have the resources.
We, we worked on trying to revamp a few things. I know that's an issue that come up as far as the 100% of you guys or Google classroom assignments or want to make sure that we have an opportunity to make up that time.
Cause they want more work.
Right. You surprised me. More, okay?
How many were getting like trashed every year?
Was there responsibility? I mean, we had to sign papers and agreements for them not being able to, I mean.
Uh, number one to address that, tough to enforce.
Yes.
Uh, number two, for John's question, untenable unless we had a significantly larger budget and more manpower. I'm not sure if it was a, I know I can eat these keys, but I mean, it was almost like, and again, I'll, I'm not quoting Steve, but I'll paraphrase. It got to the point where it's like, there was a lot of questions of, is this willful? Because it, this is bad, you know, just in terms of the volume of what was happening, you know? And again, the, the vast majority of those Chromebooks were bought with one-time funds. So we just, you know, to, to be able to keep that up would be an impossibility. So, and the philosophical piece about lessening screen time was a big part of what Steve and I had talked about last year.
I know towards the beginning of the school year, um, I talked to you about schools can get things at a discount and like doing a bulk buy. And the logistics of that wasn't feasible, but like the start of, I don't know, football season, Dick's Sporting gets, gives, you know, everybody a 20% off coupon so you can buy your gear there. Could we look at maybe something with Best Buy or Target or something like that to where like the start of the school year, here's a 20% off coupon if you need to buy a Chromebook for your kid? Cause I know at some point I'm going to have to buy a Chromebook because I don't, I only have my work one, which I can't let my kids use.
Sure.
We don't have Chrome, we don't have computers in our house otherwise, so.
I'll talk to Steve and see what programs exist.
Yeah.
Cause I, I, I'll plead ignorance. I, I don't know what programs like that exist.
Or to even, or to even go to another one is when we know we're doing life cycle replacement, if there's a refurbished one that we're going to life cycle out that someone could buy for very minimal 20, 30 bucks just to have one at home.
Yeah.
But I know there are, like Apple always gives 10% for students. You know what I mean? So I wonder if like Chromebook offers anything.
Yeah.
It's not Chromebook. It's the, it's the, it's Acer, it's whatever model.
Yeah. I like the life cycle ideal thing too. I mean, so I know, um, my, my work computer's getting cycled out at the end of the school year and I'm going to buy it or I can't buy my own. I have to buy one in preparation for the fact that my kid's going into junior high eventually. But.
Is there any difference between like the seventh graders and eighth graders, like, you know, maybe there's a bit of care of it or anything like that that has any problems?
I could, I could dig into it and see what kind of records exist for that.
So high school still has Chromebooks? Yeah, they still have them. See, high school still has them, they just can't take them home. Right.
Uh, cycled.
We cut that too. Okay. Stop sending.
Yeah.
In elementary.
Yeah. And admittedly, one of the biggest challenges is the instructional practices piece. Cause it can't, you know, if the kid's not taking it home every night, he literally can't teach the same way and assign homework, as you know, assign homework the same way. So, yeah. All right. Anything else on that?
Cool.
All right. I will find out some answers to those questions.
Do we need to prove this tonight?
Uh, yes, sir.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the new course changes and proposals.
Come on.
Is there a second?
A second. A motion was made by Mrs. Lyons, seconded by Mr. Helm to approve new course changes and proposals. Mrs. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlock?
Yes.
Mr. Kaber?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mr. Fullerlove?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, uh, next item, we'll start to talk about our strategic planning in terms of, uh, organizing it and trying to move towards getting some things on the books for potential meetings. Um, there is a framework that exists already from the last, uh, strategic planning efforts that's phenomenal here at Sherard, so we're not going to have to reinvent the wheel. Um, but just a few of the ideas that I want to start talking about right now, and my, my outlook for a strategic plan is we are coming up on the perfect time of year to do a strategic plan. Because in January and February, early March, that's usually when people, it's, let's face it, in Illinois, it's a little nicer to be inside than it is outside. So take advantage of that timeframe, um, to be able to get some people together and make some progress on a strategic plan. So, um, what I'd like to do is start, uh, looking at beginning in January, um, so that we could have a new plan in place by the time that August rolls around, real, realistically have a new plan, uh, that's ready to be tweaked, um, by the springtime. Okay? Uh, what the preliminary steps I'm looking at would be a survey of the community. And basically it would be, it would be somewhat open, focused on different aspects, curriculum for example, um, but the, what we call the SWOT style, you know, what are your strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, um, so that we could get some open-ended feedback from the community. And with, uh, you know, with the Google, uh, it's very easy to be able to get some feedback on that. And in addition to getting the feedback, uh, we would also be able to identify, uh, potential committee members from the community. Okay? Um, and then finally we would start looking at some potential meeting dates. And the way that I would like to do this, and, and we can talk about this, uh, as much as you'd like, is once we have an opportunity to talk as a board, you guys have an opportunity to say, here's what we would like to see as a board. I would take that, funnel it towards what we want to do for a schedule. Okay? Um, each of the subcommittees, if you will, would have different people that are responsible, some of whom are with us here tonight, uh, administrators, so that we could say, for example, Tim and Steve would. Uh, administrators, so that we could say, for example, Tim and Steve would be leading the curriculum examples, okay? Extracurricular would be Lisa, okay? So we're gonna, you know, take people and put them in charge, if you will, of a subcommittee. And then what are the interests of the board, okay? So, um, nothing tonight, concrete. I just, I'm gonna be able to, once we talk about this and, and see a plan moving forward, I can share out the past documents with you so that we can see, okay, here are the categories and then each of you can decide where it is that your interests would best lie, okay? There will be some times where if we all get together, it would have to be called a special board meeting. Uh, but if it's a subcommittee and there's just one or two board members with one or two administrators, uh, to start to plan things and then bring in some community members, um, we wouldn't have to actually have a special board meeting, okay? Who, who else here the last time went through this?
Dan. Yeah, us.
Okay. All right, so, very good. All right, questions so far? I know that's kind of a loose outline. I just wanna get the ball rolling before we start getting too much snuff. Ooh, I said it out loud, I hope that doesn't preclude any meetings.
Uh, 40 is next week, so it's all.
So. All right. So be on the lookout for an email that has the, um, uh, the documents from the last time around so that you can start picking what your interests are. And, um, and again, with that survey of the community, I'm going to ask for people who are serious about being a part of something and what it is they're interested in, okay? We've already got a start on our kids, so. All right, and that is all I had for that. The next item, uh, the National Honor Society induction ceremony. Basically, what we wanna make sure that we're doing is, um, the district has contributed some funds to the National Honor Society in the past to make sure that we have a nice induction ceremony. Um, not a huge amount of money in terms of what the budget is. I wanna say in the past, it's been approximately $2,500. Um, so the expenditure has been there and it's come from a variety of sources. It's come from, um, some activity funds at the building level with Mr. Warnington. It's come from some of the things that National Honor Society has done to raise funds or funds that had already existed. And then some of it has come from the district. Uh, Ms. Gagliardo, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Fritsch, essentially all planning-based people, that would be a good way to put it. They just wanna make sure that there's some stability that they can count on because over the last few years, they've used a little bit more out of their National Honor Society fund and that is starting to, um, decline, their fund balances. So, um, they wanted to make sure that, uh, myself and the board were on board with making sure that they could count on a stable source of funding. I said, in principle, I love it, but tell us exactly what it is you do. So, a few of the things that they said. Each member, of which there are 42 this year, must complete 20 hours of volunteer service each semester. Excuse me, 10 of which are sponsored by National Honor Society within our school and district. The other 10 are of their choosing for outside organizations. Many kids go above this minimum. Um, so they've done things like help with the Tiger closet, weekly deliveries, uh, maintenance organization. They've drove the golf carts at the football games. They've done the Nurish to Flourish wiffle ball tournament. Uh, they've helped the junior high and high school orientation night, Gigi's Playhouse, local church events, Quad City Animal Welfare Center, yard work for neighbors, adaptive ski clinics, shop with a cop, Operation Santa fundraiser. So essentially, if we were to break it down by the hour, getting a pretty good, getting a pretty good deal for the things that the, the kids do for our district, uh, and our community, for a slight stipend, if you will, to make sure that they have a nice opportunity and a nice evening. Mr. Warnington, am I missing anything?
I think so.
Okay. And it's, it's cool to see those, it's, it's cool to see kids that they work so hard at the academic piece of it and service, uh, to, to dress up and bring their parents and be recognized.
Well, the change of venue, I think, might have come from you, cause in my nine years here, I think we've done three or four different things as far as the ceremony itself, from here to something to the auditorium and some snacks. Uh, to where we're at now at the Camden Center, I think, is the last couple of years there, my opinion is, is very nice. Very well done, it just costs a little bit more. And so we need to be prepared to, to help out with that a little bit more.
So, we're not looking to do the whole bill, right? Just help supplement?
Right.
Okay.
And that's the conversation I had with Ms. Gagliardo was, um, uh, I think that the, the funding, that an adequate funding level to match that, what has been done in the past, 2,500 to $3,000 range, yes. So that they can count on that and know what else they have to do from a fundraising perspective or from an activity fund perspective. So they can count on, uh, they'll have to look at three different sources. Like I said, they'll probably have to do some fundraising, um, they'll have to do some things with activity accounts for National Honor Society and then they will have, um, obviously, the district contribution to count on, so. Any questions with that one?
No, I have some suggestions for you later.
Perfect. And I, I've got, uh, Candace's email here if anybody wants to, cause there, there's a, quite a list that I'm, I won't read through everything of what they're doing, so. All right, thank you. Um, and finally, um, coming from the, um, uh, the Vision 2030. Many of you, uh, remember the Vision 2020. Uh, Mr. Fullerlove was an integral part of that, um, with the Illinois Association of School Boards. Uh, and what that is, is it's the, the triple I organization, the School Board Association, Administrators Association, School Business Association. Um, and I was a peripheral part of this simply because my superintendent at the time, uh, was on the statewide committee. So he included me in a bunch of things and asking questions in terms of how it would translate down to the building level. But I would say the number one thing that came out of Vision 2020, uh, was the, uh, push for the evidence-based funding model, which has been transformative in terms of what is happening with state funding in Illinois. Um, my first year as a superintendent in 2017 was difficult because walking in the door, we were looking at about a 10%, 15% reduction in state funds. Um, luckily, that, uh, was reduced and it only ended up being about a 5% reduction or proration. Uh, but nonetheless, since the state legislature, uh, has approved the evidence-based funding and then like I said, the main push behind that was Vision 2020. Um, education funding in the state of Illinois has been stable longer than it ever has before. So, um, it was, it was a great, uh, great push forward, is a great way to unify people from a lot of different backgrounds and a lot of different viewpoints towards a common goal. And that was making sure that our public schools, uh, had increased and stable funding. So I think that, uh, those efforts really moved it to the top of the list. Um, I've included, um, the basic toolkit, if you will, talking, uh, point there so that you can look over that. What the triple I organizations, school board, administrators, business officials are looking for is, um, formal board action, uh, to demonstrate support. It doesn't bind us in any way other than to say, yes, we believe in these principles, this is what we want to see happen as well. Um, and then obviously, there's a couple of links in that document as well that you can click on it. And if anybody has any questions, just let me know. But I wanted to introduce that tonight, um, so that we can talk about it before, uh, uh, moving on next month for potentially putting it on the agenda. So, but I will be contacting all of you to get your ideas individually, so.
Okay.
That is it, sir.
Communication correspondent, Sue.
Oh, head boss said last night, um, they are almost fully staffed. Yeah, it does a big thing. And I, but then two are on leave, but, um, the problem is space, there's still not enough space. And that, so, still struggling there. Um, that was just the main good thing. Prepping for state testing. Good thing that they're almost staffed. And then she was gonna get, work on kind of numbers, cause we were asking about what is the waitlist? And then she's got to juggle some things and just kinda see what's on.
Do they have permanent leadership now, or is that desert?
Yeah, Candy Ruggler's been there, right, and now, where she's most of it is like simmered and things are smooth and. Yes, I feel much more informed under her leadership there and I think she's cleaned up quite a bit.
Yeah, she's a winner.
Yeah, so, yeah, things are going much better.
And they're looking towards the permanent hires for administrators that are currently filled by interim positions?
Yeah, they posted a Phoenix.
Filling with, is there intent to fill with interns or keep?
Uh, I think they want, because the, the center, uh, the center opened up so late, uh, there weren't the quality applicants. Somehow they're trying to do it, you know, with the full-year search, so.
Forty-five minute.
Okay, any future gender items? Hearing none, with that, I'll entertain a motion going to executive session in accordance with five LSC, subsection 120C, subsection C, subsection 1 through 12, 16 and 21.
Let's do it.
Nice. A motion was made by Mr. Helm, second by Mrs. Lyon, to go into executive session. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you all.